No.
I mean, it might be the other way, going to a river. I think it might be.
Yeah, they went into the river.
Oh, that was, uh, it was very hard happening.
I know.
Pretty much from the road now.
Money, it's kind of jobs. The investment in the insurance, the insurance, the insurance.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's just, it is what it is, you know?
In the parking room, on the balcony, and the trucks in the room. And the whole lot, that car. They have to use their truck, $250,000 dollar trailer on their truck.
Yeah.
And still, all tires blown.
That's the idea. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Because they told me to. It's in the room.
Oh, that's funny.
It is, it's a good time.
Good.
Jim, what did I write? Sure, it's bad, interesting, at least both of them. It could be worn, too.
From where?
Green school.
That sounds fun. Thank you.
We kicked it off on that.
Hello, Peter.
Nope. Good evening, French.
Good evening.
How are you? I don't know.
So, I'm shocked. Oh, it looks good.
Yeah, I can talk to me. But I'd like to get a statement from you that your kids, that can believe. Something more, um, about you about this.
Thank you, kicking off the.
Okay.
Can I maybe email you later?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll email you tonight. I just have to, like, sit and think for a second.
I'm gonna write all this up, um.
It's gonna be a long meeting, but yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's. Yeah, I just think every time you have people behind you, which at least have a single lower, um, the back or slide.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
It's.
Are you settling in, or you all?
Oh, yeah, no, it's good. Uh, hung out with John Kenny today for, like, three hours.
Well, yes, we finally, we still did.
We had a little more stuff at the church, assuming it was Golden Eagle School project, so we sat down and.
And an old buddy would be, you know, pull up the juice right.
Yeah, we decided not to be as mean as we wanted to.
Oh, I am, yeah, we certainly do.
No one knows secrets ever, you know, before. No one. He is.
This was construction guy. Yeah. The construction guy.
According to him.
He's our guy. We found a, uh.
Well, coming up with. Well.
My co-host, my co-host, we were joking.
You know, he's actually gonna be listed as a stunt driver for this. Yeah. He's gotta be, he'll be in IMDb. I heard, uh, has, uh.
Everyone is dispute.
And so, we're joking.
Well, you gotta go to the, uh, big, uh, line.
About, uh, this is no longer.
They are.
I was like, oh, he repeated if we told him there was no.
I'm prepared, I'm practicing.
Hello to your name.
It's a star. I mean, he's so.
Hello to my name?
No, we're calling your name.
I don't, I don't really know.
This throws cracks me up. Love it.
Some of the stuff we were reading through the life, it's really, it's for how long?
No, that's the truth. You get four kids.
Literally quoted in the lawsuit that has nothing to do with petition, just because it quoted his lawsuit. I kid you not, it's like, what is this?
I see the ties. Building on the principle of course.
It's like, uh.
Oh, man. But, yeah. It's been, it's been like a probably long week, but it's not very. If you want. Have been following this also. You know, it's cute. It's more.
Todd, um, Rico says he's getting static. Are you also experiencing static?
Yeah, it's this low level hum, um, like, uh, I don't know how to describe it. Yep.
But it's off now.
It's now. Now it sounds good.
Is that done, are you guys?
It's still there, but it's a lot lower. I think it's manageable for now.
I'll now call the, uh, council to order at 6:05 PM. September 2nd, 2021.
Your audio is really bad.
All right, um. Vice Mayor Kaiser, would you like to lead us in the flag?
Keep my honor. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do a roll call. Councilman Art.
Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Luquezi.
President.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Deuge.
Here.
Mayor Bryan.
President. All right, um, today we have no special presentations and announcements. I would like to, um, move forward into our general public comment section. It's the opportunity for any member of the general public to come and comment on any item that's not on the agenda for today. So anything generally, or anything that's on our consent agenda, which is the check register, resolution, approving application for 50-50 matching grant to support the Dunsborough Fire Department, and appointing, uh, citizens to our solid waste ad hoc committee. Those are on the consent agenda. So anything that covers those, or anything you'd like to say, uh, come to the podium or hit, uh, raise your hand button in the participants tab.
Mr. Mayor, can I bring up that thing I mentioned before? I'd like to move off of the consent agenda, the three people going for the ad hoc committee, just in the sense that, uh, I believe we should always have anybody who's serving on one of these committees stand up and say hello, so the people have, uh, had a chance to see who they are. So I'd just like to move that into the consent, off the consent agenda.
I'd have to concur with that assessment. Me, too. With the notion, you can't leave, is it going to be two or three? We have to choose.
Yes.
Two, two.
All right, uh, so let's move that, that'll now become new business. Or would that, that be old business, technically? Old business, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So, uh, if any member of the public would like to come up, just state your name and address for the record, and you'll be allotted three minutes. We keep, keep it timely. All right. If you're joining us via Zoom, you can go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand button.
I did, um, get a phone call today that Lindsay Hanley wanted to make a public comment, and so Lindsay, um, your three minutes are starting now.
Thank you.
As I was, as I was walking to this meeting, Lindsay was putting her helmet on and motorcycling home.
And I made it home, just in time.
That agree.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so first, I'd like to introduce myself. Um, my name is Lindsay Hanley. I am the curator of the Siskiyou Arts Museum. Um, I also run a custom picture framing business, and, um, my husband Martin and I just opened, um, Cobra Lily Bar and Bottle on Pine Street. Um, I am an upstanding member of our community. Um, I own a home in Dunsborough, um, and I love it here. Um, a few weeks ago, um, I had an incident with Mark Allen. Um, he gave me a warning, um, since I was parked in front of 4118 Pine, um, in the yellow loading zone. Um, I personally thought that it was silly, um, but, you know, respected his warning. And then, um, on the 26th of August, um, I was again parked there, um, not disturbing my neighbor Brad, um, and all of a sudden, um, two sheriffs pulled up. Um, and they informed me that Mark Allen had requested that they cite me for a parking violation. Next thing I know, a third sheriff pulled up. Um, and I will add that the sheriffs all thought that this whole situation was pretty ridiculous. Um, I feel that the escalation of the situation was unnecessary, um, and could have been handled in a much more friendly civilized manner. Um, for example, a, a formal letter, a phone call, an email, um, lots of other ways to go about this without causing a scene in front of my brand new business in Dunsborough. Um, so I'm just, um, here to state my, um, unhappiness, um, my disappointment in, um, in the situation. I feel that the, um, city condones this behavior since Mark Allen is a, um, an employee of the city. Um, I've also talked to many community members, and, uh, many people have had issues with Mark's negativity, his unfriendliness, um, his aggression. Um, so I just wanted to share my experience and my, um, frustration, um, with the situation.
All right, uh, thank you so much, Lindsay. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, uh, is there any further public comment for this, uh, general public comment period?
For those people on Zoom that want to do a public comment, just go to the participants tab and raise your hand.
I think, um, Councilman Kaiser here would like me to mention, um, that we do have representatives of the film, uh, production being filmed here in Dunsborough. If anyone has any general comments on that, now would be the time to bring it up, because it's not actually on the agenda. Uh, but if not, uh, well, thank you guys for your presence, and you don't necessarily need to stay for any more questions.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, uh, see no further public comment. I will now close.
Wait, wait. Mr. Michael's up there.
Yeah. Please come forward, Mr. Bush.
Come on, Michael, you can do it.
I've done it enough before.
I know you have.
You know, I think I'm gonna let this one go. This, uh, this is gonna be a long meeting, and let's just look, I, I can do it another time. This is, there's no problem.
Are you sure?
Call me and talk to me tomorrow.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna let it go.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Look forward to hearing from you, uh, future meetings. I'd, uh, see no other public comments. Um, I'm gonna close public comment period. Um, and let's move into council and staff comments. I'm just gonna begin this one with, um, letting everyone know if they didn't, uh, already that on Friday, there was another derailment at the Quintera Loop, um, bridge over the Sacramento River. Um, looks like everything was handled with auto abandoned, and, um, this is, kind of highlights how vulnerable Dunsborough is when it comes to that particular bridge crossing and derailments. Uh, we're grateful that the construction they put in place after the spill 30 years ago seems to have hold, held in this particular instance, uh, but it was a near call, because , uh, two of the tanker cars were carrying sulfuric acid, but they just happened to be empty at this exact point. So, you know, we're balancing some improvement at that site with the fact that if something were spilled into the river, the best estimates for a hazmat crew responding, um, the spill's gonna be already, already halfway to Chastel Lake in a best case scenario before people are up here. So, um, I had, um, asked some people at Union Pacific to join this meeting to kind of discuss this. I, I do hope to have them at a future meeting, let's not let it drop. Um, there's not a lot we can do about it, and there's a long history here with this particular spill, but I just want everyone to know that, um, we are safe, the river is just fine, no cars were punctured. Um, it's quite dramatic, Union Pacific, I believe, will be in the process of cleaning it up over the next days and weeks. Um, people could stay away from that area, um, in the short term, because it's somewhat dangerous.
Mr. Mayor, can I follow up behind you, sir? Um, normally, I, I'll go later on, but I, I'd like to come in right behind that, and I want to commend you, sir, um, as our mayor and our leader. You took hold of this one by the reins, buddy. You, uh, went out there, walked it, which was not probably easy, and, um, you experienced it firsthand, and you put a video out there, which in turn kept other people from going out there to see it, getting everybody else's way. You informed the people, that's your job. Um, I commend you, did a good job, and, uh, that, we, we kind of made me proud, buddy. So, uh, on another note, um, the farmer's market, today I checked with them, they did a, they did a pretty good day today, and if you haven't gone out there on Thursdays, it's, uh, uh, the tamales are to die for, so go get some tamales. And then, as was mentioned earlier, the movie People Are in Town, I want to thank all the businesses that have licenses that, uh, can help us, and some have been over backwards. Thank you for allowing this to happen. Uh, the people that have participated, if they, when it's all said and done, they're gonna have hired about 100 people, and I've had the privilege, the honor, of working with these people all the way through it. Their top-notch outfit, and, uh, it, I'm really looking forward to the end product, and they're really putting Dunsborough on the map. So, um, it, it, this is a way of inviting, and I'm, we're, we're working with the Shasta Film Commissioner, and this is a way of inviting other theatrical people, film companies, et cetera, whether it's commercials or what, uh, to, to invite them to come and see the beauty. I met a gentleman today, when I asked him if we could park the RV in front of his house to accommodate, and he said, man, you know what? I moved here, it's a gift to live here, between the people and the beauty of Dunsborough, you can do whatever you want. So, um, if you're watching, thank you, bud, and, uh, thanks to everybody that has helped do this, and I think in the end, we'll all be proud.
All right, thank you, Councilman Kaiser.
Thank you.
Nice, let's continue, um, Councilman Art.
Well, I, I notice, uh, no city manager, no financial.
All right, they're, they're both up here, um, on Zoom.
You're sort of changing the.
Um, yeah, I was dealing with the most immediate issue first. Councilman Kaiser jumped in there, did, so we can continue with councilman comments.
Um, I have, uh, three, and I joined the mayor on Sunday morning with a representative of the county office of emergency services, with a representative in the sheriff's office to see all of the overturned cars right at the Quintera Loop. The two cars that were missing were the tank cars, and all I've observed since the spill is very long freight trains with a lot of tank cars traversing this very same area. So, I very much, Union Pacific, to come here, make a presentation, how do we work together to assure the 1991 spill never happens again? How do we partner on Mossbury? How do we partner on the entire rail line and the sanctity of the river? We need to do this. As Supervisor Valen Fuella said, we got lucky with everything else going on, COVID, fires, this, that, we got lucky, but let's not push our luck. We're all responsible for the health of the river, the health of our community. As I get it now, the Office of Emergency Services at the state level is sort of in its primacy, so how can we work together to make sure the river is safe? Issue number two is vaccinations. I appreciated all the letters in the Dunsborough News, pushing back against the notion that vaccinations are a personal choice, and the reality is, we're running out of ICU beds in the northern counties. We're down to two in one county, we're down to zero in other counties. If someone you love needs heart surgery, well, sorry, there's no ICU beds, because they're filled with people that refuse to get vaccinated in our COVID cases. So, anything this city can do to promote common sense measures, to keep our kids safe, to keep our old people safe, we need to be very vigilant about trying to beat COVID with especially the Delta variant, and what comes behind with vaccination and masking. My third point is to shout out to the Dunsborough Fire Department, and every firefighter in the state of California and outside the state of California for their heroic service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Uh, Councilman Deuge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, uh, put a post in the Neighborhood Watch, because there had been a, a lot of consternation dealing with, um, the scheduling of the shoot, uh, last week, and the closing of Dunsborough Avenue. Um, as I said in that post, um, it was, uh, attributed to a misunderstanding between the film company and City Hall. So after that, this being the first time we've ever dealt with a movie being in town of this nature, uh, the learning process, uh, took place, and for this one that's coming up tomorrow, um, Brian Wilson went out and talked to all the businesses. So, um, I do believe that when we look at this overall experience, if we only concentrate on the, the problems that have occurred, um, uh, I think we're missing the much larger point, and, uh, the larger point is that there's between 60 and 100 people right now, um, and have been in the city for two weeks, going on three coming up, and those people are spending money, and, uh, they're, they're doing that, and we're getting, people that are getting employed, whether as part of a crew, or whether they're doing the, um, uh, what's the word, um, background people, extras, I'm sorry, extras. So all that's going on, and, and, and I think that, as a city that's a tourist city, the idea that we're gonna be mentioned in all these different conversations that are going on about this new movie, and the fact that the star is having his first American movie experience, that's all beneficial to us, and I think that the more we welcome them, like, uh, Councilman Kaiser says, there may be other movies that want to come here. And there are a lot of people out there, they have no idea what a Dunsborough is, and they're gonna get a chance through these vehicles to see us and want to come and visit us and maybe move here. So I just think the best way to look at this experience is, it's a learning experience, we, we all as a group, uh, made some mistakes, but I think the spirit moving forward is something that we can celebrate, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Deuge. Councilman Luquezi.
I really don't have much to contribute tonight. I know we have, um, a lot on our agenda. I am working still on the lifeline item for rates. I did get to bend John Kenny's ear earlier today, because I was working with him on something else, um, so I, I asked quickly on that one, um, so I'm hoping to bring that at our next meeting, um, that we can consider that as we go through the utility rate study.
Thank you.
One, one more thing, Mr. Mayor, for my, there was a fire, um, out there at this thing that really nobody knows about, but our fire department handled it, really, that's why they the man, they, our guys are the best, but, um, uh, it has been a year of close calls. I think that's, we should call this year, a year of close calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kaiser. Um, city manager.
Yes. So, um, a lot of things going on. First, the, uh, the train derailment, um, trying to work out communications issues with UP. The first, uh, um, report that I got from UP, and, uh, that Dan got as well, is that it involved one car, uh, then we had some folks out on the scene, that it went from 14 cars to 18. Um, uh, you know, Councilman Kaiser is right, that it appears that, uh, somebody that was homeless was out there, probably was scared by the crash, had a warming fire, and that took off, but, uh, it was managed. So we've got new management down, uh, at the yards, um, at UP, and, and trying to work with them on some issues, and, you know, and, um, they've been, you know, they've been pretty easy to work with, but want to make sure that when we get a situation like this, that we get better reporting upfront. You know, uh, there's a, a ton of stuff going on. We've, uh, have preliminary engineering plans in hand for the Butterfly Bridge that I need to review, and we're moving forward with the 800-foot bridge and the relocation of the water line, um, and that's, that's been pretty intensive, and, um, yeah, I mean, there's, there's just a whole lot going on behind the scenes, especially as it relates to fire prevention and making sure that we can see what we can do about, uh, fuel reduction. So, um, yeah, because there's almost too much to mention in this meeting.
All right, uh, thank you, city manager. Uh, are there any questions for city manager?
Yes, I, I would like to, I kind of want to earmark what Mr. Art said about asking Union Pacific to come here and give us, tell us something. I mean, their stuff runs right through our yard. Uh, I think we're entitled to, period. We're, we're entitled.
We definitely hope to have, um, some representative of Union Pacific, the higher up, um, the more responsible, the better, um, we just need to send the clear message that it's very simple for Dunsborough. For Union Pacific, this is the cost of doing business. For Dunsborough, it's life and death, and we just need to make sure that they understand that we're that serious about this issue. Um, but we'll, we'll hopefully bring that, that back, and my hope is, in the near future, with a representative of Union.
That, that's noted, um, I'm gonna make a call.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, finance director.
Um, nothing to report, thanks.
Thank you, Blake. All right, um, I guess let's move forward into committee reports.
Do we have the sheriff here, or not?
I don't think so, not tonight.
Okay.
I do have a finance committee report, uh, we met on Monday, and we concluded the, um, public works director item, uh, that was our only item on the agenda, so I'll save our discussion until later.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, were there any other committees that met?
Sure.
All right, uh, we did have a, uh, rather in-depth meeting for our public safety committee, uh, Councilman Kaiser and myself, um, and, uh, city staff, and sheriff's department. Sheriff LaRue is in attendance, and, um, we're working out a lot of our communication issues, and we discussed at length, um, how to work together in enforcing our ordinances, particularly the new vacant and abandoned building areas. So, uh, we're kind of working on solidifying everything for that process, so if any of our steps ever get challenged in court, um, both the sheriff's department and the city are very confident that we're in a good standing to start the process goes. Councilman Kaiser, you were there, we discussed a very many things regarding, uh. Can my question in Dunsborough?
Can we? Okay, we're gonna, we should, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I advise the people of our community, laws are going to be, start being enforced. If you're speeding, you're gonna get a ticket. If you ain't registered, you're gonna get a ticket. If you ain't got insurance, you ain't got a ticket.
Yeah, it was discussed that, um, s- some issues regarding vehicle code have been allowed to lapse a little bit too long, and that we're going to be stepping up enforcement of these very basic California-wide laws. So if you don't have a registered car, um, you know, expect to be hearing from the sheriff or code enforcement officer in the very near future, and expect to have that situation be processed.
Or if you're speeding through school zones, you're gonna get a ticket.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, no other committees met, uh, let's move forward to the approval of the minutes for our August, uh, well, both our special meeting on August 12th and our regular meeting on August 19th.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes.
I will not, cannot, nor do I ever have remember, um, approving special me, minutes. I don't remember ever taking minutes of a special meeting. That is not supposed to be there. Now that I said that, I will make motion to approve the regular meeting of August 19th.
Uh, real quick, uh, I, at least in my time on council, we have made a practice to keep minutes for special meetings.
This was for the, um, presentation for, that Paul gave us.
Oh.
You weren't here.
There, so you cannot.
Because I've never seen no minutes of a special, so I apologize.
No, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, you, you weren't in attendance, because you had your surgery that day.
All right, there's a motion. All right, there's a motion to approve uh, the August 19th regular meeting.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I move, we approve the special.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four in favor, one abstains.
Sorry.
All right.
Oh, you're okay.
Had to get a key cast.
It's okay.
If it takes getting John Kenny up here, we need to get this straight. It is my belief that the Brown Act requires minutes for every meeting, open or closed, special or not. I could cite to the section of the Brown Act, but let's get this cleared up.
I asked John today, actually, and he said you do not have to record a closed session.
The alternate is to have the city clerk here with a minute book. That's what this, that's what the Brown Act requires.
You can talk to Todd and John about that, but it's a different opinion.
But I'm happy to. We need to conduct lawful meetings.
Correct. We, we did do it correctly.
Um, it's a very good conversation. We can certainly talk about putting that on the agenda or having a internal report or workshop for council on Brown Act. I think that generally would be a good idea if we can fit that in. But let's move forward with um, the consent agenda for tonight. So we removed item C, appointment um, of the citizens to the Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee. Um, on to old business, so it's just item A, check registry from August 14th through August 27th. And a resolution approving an application for a 50/50 matching grant to support the Dunsborough Fire Department purchasing new communications equipment.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, uh, there's a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote as one of these items requires expansion.
Who do we give credit for item B?
Probably Dan and Todd.
I believe it would be Danny and Todd, but this was a repeat of a grant we approved two years ago.
Councilmember Oath.
Aye.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Doig.
Aye.
Mayor Brian.
Aye.
So let's move on to uh, public hearing. So we do have a public hearing tonight. Uh, the proposed ordinance amending Title 16 of our ordinances subdivisions of the Dunsborough Municipal Code to provide greater flexibility in the city's lot design standards and reduce the number of non-conforming lots. City Planner, I believe, is on the line. Rico?
Good evening, I am. Can everyone hear me fine?
Yes.
Great. Uh, so the project is an amendment to Title 16 subdivisions of the Dunsborough Municipal Code. Provide greater flexibility in the lot design standards and reduce the number of non-conforming lots. The project would eliminate the redundant minimum lot sizes and dimensions in Dunsborough Municipal Code Section 1620090. These standards are also included in Title 17 zoning, which is the appropriate location for this information. The project would amend Section 1620090 to require that the average lot depth not exceed three times the average width. This would replace the existing requirement that lots not have an average width that is less than one-half the average depth and that they not be wider than they are deep. A maximum of three-to-one ratio is more commonly encountered in other jurisdictions, more consistent with historic plating in the city, and appears to be more appropriate for community developed round canyon topography. Regarding CEQA, this SASS recommendation that the project is exempt pursuant to CEQA guidelines, Section 15061B3. This is the common sense exemption that states CEQA only applies to projects that have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. If the city council concurs, the council will need to make the finding that the project would not have a significant impact on the environment and is exempt from CEQA prior to approving the project. Accordingly, findings to this effect have been incorporated into the draft ordinance prepared for the city council's consideration. Ultimately, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Draft Ordinance 571, which is included as attachment aid to the staff report. Specifically, I'm recommending that the council introduce and read Ordinance 571 by title only and that the council direct staff to bring Ordinance 571 back for adoption at the next regular meeting. Recommended motion to this effect is provided for the council's consideration on page four of the staff report. Also, apologies in advance, the word "we" is missing and shouldn't be inserted as a fourth word in the suggested motion. Uh, and with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Doig. Thank you. Uh, Rico, the, I think to clarify what we're doing here in, in all the various changes that are being made throughout this, is that we're taking away something that has restricted um, our community of where we have needs for uh, unique lot sizes based upon the topography. Is that right?
That's correct. We've just, we have inconsistent application of these standards in the past. Uh, and we have, right now, we have development that is being curtailed because of these standards. Uh, so frankly, when I looked into it, I saw that this was much more restrictive than I've seen in other jurisdictions. Uh, and just wanted to propose some common sense solutions.
All right, I just have one question. What would have been the intention behind this, just to prevent narrower lots?
The, which one are you talking about? The, the, no, shall be half as wide?
Yeah, the reason why we have our current ordinance. What was the intention behind that?
So I'm not sure, frankly, um, so one, I mean, you can argue uh, the reason for not being wider than they are deep. Um, I, we, you would typically have that, so you have sufficient number of lots or a number of homes on a street to have that uh, community presence. Uh, but really, um, given the size of lots in Dunsborough, uh, this is um, overly restrictive.
Councilman Kaiser?
Okay, I'm confused. So let me just get it straight. I'm going to ask this question kind of a weird way. Mr. Smith, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Johnson all got a piece of property next to each other. Does this weigh in any of, way affect what Mr. Jones or what Mr. Johnson or what Mr. Smith own?
It does not affect what they own and uh, so, and more importantly, the question is whether this affects what can be developed in the city. So it, and it really, it does provide greater flexibility so that uh, in your staff report, I provide you with the example of the, the merger of lots that couldn't be approved that would have allowed for development of an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, as described in that, in the staff report, that unit could still be developed, uh, just not as an accessory dwelling unit, but as a standalone. Um, and that's sort of true for all of the non-conforming lots we have in the city as well. With regard to uh, these provisions, uh, they can still be uh, developed with certain, you know, despite they meet their uh, setbacks and all other development criteria. So that we're not really opening up a whole bunch of uh, property to development. Um, and Pete, you know, frankly, there's no penalty for having a non-conforming lot, uh, per se. Um, so what we're really doing is just sort of uh, addressing a constraint that we have in our, in our subdivision ordinance. Um, that is excessive.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any, Councilman O'Neal?
Well, this may be a legitimate set of stupid questions. I was going to recuse myself because I own a number of lots in the historic district. And I guess the question is, this seems to be focused on Title 16 subdivisions. My experience, properties in the historic district, they have a 25-foot frontage. They typically conform to exactly the formula you're recommending. Three times depth versus one times width. But does this affect the histor- where are we going to do subdivisions? And is this citywide or just certain parts of the city?
Uh, so I'll start with the last, this is citywide. Uh, then I'll take on your question about subdivisions. Uh, that is a fantastic question. Last subdivision we had was actually the Traveler's Hotel, which was the condominiums. But, but prior to that, I've not seen the, in my time with the city, I've not seen a subdivision. Um, so, um, and frankly, how it affects, again, if it's an existing legal lot, uh, it's an existing legal law. So all we're really doing, saying is, uh, for the creation of future lots, you can, uh, you can be wider than you are deep. And you don't need to have to stay to the two-to-one ratio. You can actually go to the three-to-one ratio. Uh, because uh, that is historically what we've allowed in the city. And uh, it's, it's just a more common practice.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, if I could, I'd like to get the opinion of the other person with a lot of planning experience in this. What are your thoughts?
Oh, I was just going to ask one question, just because I'm curious. It's um, in letter D, you use the term, excuse me, you use the terms average lot depth and average width. Why do you use that as opposed to just saying lot depth or width?
I'm sorry, I'm having to go to D, I see you referring to the ordinance itself.
Yeah, um, I, I apologize, 16.20.090, letter D that you have in here. You just used the terms, the average lot depth and average width. Why do you add the word average?
Uh, because we have lots that are not rectangles.
Okay, so that's, that's why you just used the average word?
Correct.
Okay, that, that, that's my only question. I was just curious why you were, used the terminology. Other, other than that, no, I, I'm fine with it. Frankly, a lot of development issues that we come across in planning can be pointed to outdated setbacks, outdated lot lines. Um, and the more flexible it is, the more you're actually almost mimicking original development. Because originally, when the town developed, we didn't really have zoning regulations, so people kind of just made lots. Um, and so it, it's probably going to be a little bit more beneficial for people who want to subdivide larger lots into more logical, unique, you know, probably more typical to what the historic neighborhoods would have been.
What, it doesn't remove all constraints?
No, it doesn't remove all constraints. You do want some. There's a reason to zone and have lot standards. Um, but no, yeah, I'm, I'm very much in favor of any flexibility we can add to the code. I've had conversations with Rico before about moving away from some of our, our setback standards, which I think are much more restrictive than the lot line definitions. But um, overall, this is the trend that you're seeing in planning is to become more flexible.
I very much agree that setbacks could use some revisiting and some of the experience.
Yeah, anyway, sorry, that was a little discussion. Apologize. Thank you, Rico.
All right.
My pleasure.
Are there any further questions about City Planner? All right, thank you, Rico. I will now uh, open up this topic to public hearing. Uh, so if any members of the public would like to comment on this, um, either come to the podium, please. Um, you're allowed three minutes. Um, state your name and address for the record, or if you're on Zoom, go to the Participants tab and hit the Raise Your Hand button.
Hi, I'm Mike Delabana. I live here in Dunsborough, 4412 Olive Street. And this is actually a question for Rico. What happens when, is this precedence, if case we have a disaster and Dunsborough's literally wiped off the map? Do we have to conform with this? Because that happened up in Weed at Bowls Creek. You know, some of the setbacks were from the mill town and they had a difficult time trying to acquire the proper setbacks and everything like that. Will these hold up or is that a totally different piece? That's what I just, that's a good question. What happens? I don't know if that's something that we need to get Rico to respond on or what?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer.
Excuse me, Rico, uh, let's continue with public comment, then we can respond afterwards. Thank you. Uh, is there any additional public comment to this public hearing? All right, I see none. I will now close the public hearing. Uh, Rico?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say, so uh, Mr. Delabana, uh, this doesn't actually affect legal parcels or setbacks or anything. Really what it does is just simply it allows for the mo- modification of um, parcel boundaries that are more flexible and conform to the uh, topography that we have in the canyon.
This is a silly question, Rico. When, have we looked at our non-conform, or legally existing non-conforming use ordinance in a while? Or have we like amended it?
Yeah, uh, no, we have not amended it, no.
Okay. Sorry, just, sorry.
But, but I will, I will tell you, it is being amended as part of the comprehensive zoning code update to allow people to rebuild uh, without jumping through hoops.
Cool, thank you.
Is that also um, the fence height thing involved with that also?
Uh, I believe we are dealing with the fence height as well, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rico. So with the public hearing closed, I believe we'll take it up again as a action item in new business. Um, so let's move on to old business.
Oh, we, we do need to take action. So there is, there's discussion and action.
There's a motion.
Okay, well, we can do that. I'm just, I'm confused why it's on.
Oh, is it on twice?
It was put on new business as well. I don't, I think you can probably eliminate that from new business and take care of this.
Oh, I did notice that.
Let's take action now, then.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we should stay on topic with the item. Um, I just, really quick for discussion, just pertaining to the non-conforming use typically. Even if you have a non-legal lot, so if there is something wonky with your setbacks in your lot, if you're typically with a disaster, if your building falls down, you are allowed to rebuild the building as is. But it would have to be built to current fire code and building code standards. So anything related to disasters, it's, it's in state code that you do have to at least meet the new building and fire, which typically, if you have insurance, they will pay for that upgrade. Um, but with uh, zoning and lot dimensions and things like that, it's a, usually you can allow, you are allowed to rebuild as was.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion of this item?
Well, uh, Rico, without disclosing names, it sounds like the situation you put at the lead of your memo. Here's someone that owns two lots and they would like to merge them and have an accessory dwelling unit. But the current restrictions say, no, you can't do that. This would allow them to do what they wanted to do in the first place.
It would, but the irony is, I believe they have decided that because of the accessory dwelling unit height limits, they have chosen to likely develop the second property as a standalone.
But at least you're giving them the flexibility to make more decisions.
That was the hope, is that we were addressing a uh, a concern community-wide and that this sort of triggered it. Uh, particularly given that I observed that this has been uh, put in place elsewhere in the community and just sort of uh, the subdivision ordinance was missed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rico.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I mean, that we make the findings that the project is exempt from CEQA, that we introduce and read Ordinance 561 by title only.
71.
571 by title only, and that we direct staff to bring Ordinance 571 back for adoption at the next regular meeting.
Second.
All right, uh, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion at hand?
Was there a CEQA finding in that?
Negative, Decker.
Uh, no, it was a general, common sense exemption. It was a 15603B?
15061B3.
Thank you, sorry. I'm almost there.
Very good, I'm good.
All right, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, motion carries.
Progress.
Thank you, Rico. Appreciate you cleaning up and updated ordinance. Let's move into our old business. I'm ten A, a tentative approval of public works position. Uh, Todd or Juliana?
I'm going to hand over, Todd.
Yeah, okay, so we talked about this at the finance committee and um, you know, there was a recommendation for approval to this body. Essentially, what we've got is a situation, um, you know, very much like many other cities around where we need somebody that can um, oversee all the utilities, uh, water, wastewater and public works. We're leaving a lot of money in terms of transportation funds. Uh, infrastructure and especially uh, drainage, culverts, that kind of thing. That we're just not, uh, we don't have folks that are capable of writing grants. Uh, so we, we would advertise this position. Well, let me back up. So here's, here's where we are. I've got a gentleman that I've been talking to who's been retired for more than a year. We have, um, he is wastewater five. Uh, he has his water certificates. He has a master's of public administration and is willing to write grants. Um, and so he's eligible to be pulled on full-time. Uh, at the same time, we have budgeted for a wastewater three position that hasn't gone filled and we are paying for. filled and we are paying for consultant services for a gentleman that is a wastewater three that comes up a couple of days a week. Now, if we were to, to fill that wastewater three and, you know, decide to sever the professional services contract with wastewater three, what we would get in return is a wastewater five that could run, run our plant, has water certificates and oversee our public works and create enough bandwidth that we can start writing some grants. And it would essentially, but I'm gonna let Blake talk about this for a little bit. Essentially, with, you know, the wastewater three position and the professional services for wastewater, that all comes out of enterprise funds. There would be a bit if this person is overseeing public works, there would be part of this that would be coming out of the general fund, but it essentially would, you know, we can, we can get into the numbers. I don't know, Blake, do you want to walk through, you know, what, you know, how we would end up funding this?
Well, if I could interject here, if, if finance committee considered that particular question, if that's prepared, I'd love to hear that. It's important. If it's not, we're just, we could just consider the concept if that's what we're looking for here.
Yeah, the.
Initial tentative approval.
Yeah, and, and just to add to what Todd had said, the job is going to be posted. It's going to go through a, a public, you know, job posting. People can interview for it. I think Todd's just making the point that there are people interested in this style of job. No, the finance committee met, we've met twice on the matter and we did have a unanimous vote to move forward with the recommendation to approve this. So the position itself is going to fluctuate from year to year, but so far Blake has allocated equal amounts from the enterprise funds, portion of it from the airport and a portion from the general fund to basically have this person spend some time within those areas. We're also appropriating some of the previously allocated salary for the wastewater three to cover this position as well, since they'd be meeting those requirements. They would be on site doing site inspections and also servicing the wastewater plant itself. So we, we did take a look at the financials. Blake brought those back to us and I believe they are in the packet for this item for you to take a look at if you want to look at the specifics of how it was divided out. But overall, the committee was happy with how it was equally divided. And then in the future, this, this position can continue and depending on the different types of infrastructure they're working on, their salary would pull from that area more in certain years than others. But we do have the adequate funding to be able to provide a stable revenue source for that expenditure of an additional person. And it was important to the committee that we did keep the original public work supervisor position and also add this position. So we are in fact not losing any positions. We are repurposing the wastewater three position to pay for this person. And, and that would be the, that's part of the recommendation. So that was, that was really important to the committee that we don't take away from the public works crew or that supervisor position, just because of the amount of work that the crew has been doing and is expected to do in the coming years.
You mentioned the airport, but I don't see allocation.
Hey Blake, this is more Blake too. So Blake.
What Bill Loman used to be doing up there with, you know, public works.
Yeah, well, I just see in general funds, I see 5% to streets and 5% to buildings and grounds.
Yes, keep, keep going down. So you're looking on page 43 of your packet, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so 5% streets, 5% buildings, 50% wastewater, 10% solid waste, 30% water. Oh, you, oh, so you're saying nothing to airport, right? There's nothing in the airport right now.
Okay, but they could, since they would probably be assisting with the infrastructure grants associated with those.
So the proposal would be, just for clarification, these percentages for say city manager or finance director, they're fine tuned each year to reflect the reality of the situation. So is, is this the proposal? I mean, is this like a, do we have any sort of budget amendment that would go with this in terms of detailing out what that would look like?
This would be the budget amendment.
Yeah, I think page 43 is it.
Is it?
Yep.
I have a question for the city, city manager.
Yes.
Todd, the gentleman that you have in mind, is he retired? And would he, if he is, is that, is he limited? How many hours he can work should like affects his calpers or whatever the situation we have before with someone that's like that. Is that the situation with this guy?
Great question. He is, he's retired and because he's been retired for more than a year that he can be pulled on full time.
Is that how it works? It's gotta be over a year then, huh? All right, cool, then, thank you.
Just one thing to add to this, I think that's important is you do, you may recall that we advertised for a wastewater three with our current salary that, you know, if we were able to, you know, pull this person on or, you know, so we, maybe we found somebody when we post that's a better fit. But I sent the posting directly to every wastewater three in the state and we got no responses other than, hey, Dunsmere is a beautiful community. And, you know, and frankly, someone showed up and offered their services part-time after a number of months. The idea that, you know, again, we would advertise for this position, but if this person seems as, as qualified, you know, is as qualified as he is, this guy's been running, he has been the chief plan operator for a city of 40,000 people for 20 years. He has his water certificates. He has his master's in public administration, is well versed in writing grants. The fact that we've got somebody, we might have somebody of this caliber, when we couldn't find somebody that's just a wastewater three period is, is extremely lucky.
I'm cool. Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding the tentative approval? Seems like it's a very logical thing to do. Be interesting to see who responds to this posting. Do we need this to be tentative or can we vote to approve this?
We can vote to approve this.
Well, we do need public comment. I think we put tentative on the agenda in case finance committee could not make a decision. So I think that's, yep.
Was, was finance unanimous?
Yep.
Okay. All right, if there's no further clarifying questions, I'm gonna open this one up to public comment.
Michael Bush, Butterfly Avenue, Dunsmere. This is what I wanted to say at the general public comment. I'm gonna do it now, but I, I didn't realize this was, this was on the agenda. So this is what I was gonna say. My comment is on drainage. And I think Todd referred a little bit to, as he was saying, the different grants that could be written in different things. With the logging going on, a lot of logging going on, it's gonna be going on. I think that's gonna be a big concern, the drainage for a lot of people. I know where I live, that's gonna be a big concern. So I'm hoping that whoever this guy is, whoever you choose, will be able to write these drainage grants that Todd was talking about, that he has that in his ability to do. So basically that's it. I think that's, that's gonna be the concern of a lot of people. So looking into the future, I'm hoping we have somebody who can do that. So consider that when you're deciding, you know, who to, who to give the position to. And that's, that's just my, that's all my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to the table.
All right, thank you. Is there any further public comment? I've seen none. I will close public comment for this item. Proceed with discussion.
I'm ready to make the motion. I'm with Big Dave. I'd like to approve the creation of a public works director position so I can.
Well. As allocated in page 43 perhaps? I don't know. Or is there a motion?
There's a suggestion motion on page 42, I just read it.
Okay, well, I feel like it should also be a budget amendment somehow of reference, but.
No, but I would do a roll call vote on it.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion at hand?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, for all the good things you've done, Mr. City Manager, this is extraordinary. I'm, I'm massively in favor. The two words I circled in your memorandum is this would allow the city of Dunsmere to have the bandwidth to do a better job of managing its enterprise funds. And in the uncertain future with climate change, that's critically important. Equally as important is you could delegate to him some of the tasks of tapping federal and state and county funds to help us with our enterprise funds. You simply can't do it all. So I'm very appreciative for the vision and the personal outreach. I think it's good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion?
Time's up.
All right. Wendy, can we have a roll call though?
Councilmember R.
Enthusiastic, aye.
Councilmember Luquezi.
Aye.
Councilmember Kessler.
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch.
I'm happy too, aye.
Mayor Brian.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Todd, Blake and the finance committee.
With a happy Peter and a happy Bruce.
All right, so let's move into item B of old business, interfund water sewer loan resolution 2021, 23.
All right, well, I guess I can jump in here. So the water sewer rate study ad hoc committee met, finance committee met, they've all reviewed, discussed, and they recommend to move forward with an interfund loan from water to sewer. And so that's a staff report saying there, it gives a few little bullet points there. But then moving past the staff report is the official memo from PACE for reading pleasures. And then finally, we get to the page forty, whoa.
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one, yeah, I was scrolling here. So page 51, or no, page 64 has the actual resolution. So it's being asked of council is to approve the resolution that then authorizes an interfund loan from water to sewer in the amount of $500,000 in this current fiscal year, so fiscal year 2122, with a 0% interest rate and a $125,000 payments going back from sewer to water, starting in fiscal year 2324.
And if I could add, this, you know, the kind of overarching picture here, and we've discussed this before, is the reason for this interfund transfer is, as we enter into the 218 process, because of, let's see, that, you know, irregularities with counting of the number of sewer accounts. What this loan does is, is it eases the pain of an increase for our residents, you know, to account for these irregularities.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any questions of finance director or city manager?
I think that there's a sentence that kind of, you know, this will put both enterprises on the same five-year schedule. That's kind of important.
I think that we've kind of worked this and so I would just recommend we go to a public comment and see if we have any discussion after then.
Okay, excellent. Let's proceed with public comment. Anyone like to come up and make a public comment? Please do so now.
Riveting meeting.
All right. Now close public comment on this item and proceed with discussion.
So I think we brought this up at the last meeting, but the finance committee did review this and we voted 401 in favor of recommending that the city council move forward with this, add a 0% interest. So the finance committee did, did majority approve it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to also add, as the, the chair of the ad hoc committee that looked at the rate studies, along with council member Kessler, and I just want to make it clear to the people that the process we're going through is something we have to do because we have to keep the operations in place. Everything we did on our work of coming up with the committee, the recommendations, and what the finance committee did was to find the best way we could to make this as, as painless as we can for the customers. And so everything we're doing with this particular action is specifically for that, to on one hand save $250,000 in interest on a loan that we have on the sewer area, and on the other hand, to be able to stop the rates that we would have to have in place early on and keep them at a reasonable place. So I just hope that people going forward realize that what we're doing is legal, it's done the right way with all the documentation, it's not borrowing from some other fund in the dark of night. And so I'm excited about being able to help the people be able to afford our sewer rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Deutsch. Any further discussion?
Why is everybody looking at me? I've thought a lot about this and I will say to my colleagues in the community, of all the enterprise funds we have, I think our sewer fund is doomed to failure. I think the next five-year plan for the sewer fund is going to have to embrace climate change. It's going to have to embrace tightening discharge standards into the headwaters of the upper sack. When I asked Paul Reuter, is the city of Dunsmere in compliance with our discharge standards, he said yes. In the letter from PACE Engineering, it says, page 49 of our agenda, until the city can, until the city can secure grant dollars to make improvements to the WWTP, it needs to budget about $10,000 per year to cover mandatory minimum penalties imposed by the Regional Water Quality Control Board for discharge violations. When I moved up here, I didn't like the idea of us putting our poop and our urine in the headwaters of the upper sack. City of Weed doesn't do it. The Community Service District of McLeod doesn't do it. The only communities that do it are cities, are the city of Mount Chasta and the city of Dunsmere. But I told the mayor, I'll tell anybody. As a fourth generation Californian, someone who devoted his life to utility regulation, this is a loser. The airport is not a loser. It can be turned into a profitable enterprise. But if we keep going on the track, if the next five-year plan looks like the last five-year plan, the city of Dunsmere will have the most expensive sewer rates in the county. So I am fine with syncing up the water in the sewer plants. I'm fine with paying up the $300,000 loan that makes the water enterprise that much stronger. If sewer rates don't cover the costs of providing sewer services, the sewer rates have to go up. Costs, rates, that's the way it works. We have one viable fund, that's the water fund. And the quick and easy, the rob Peter to pay Paul, that's what the city has always done. So the likelihood that the sewer fund will be able to pay back the water fund, I think is highly speculative, interest rate or not. It's just shifting funds from the one healthy fund we've got. And the notion that, well, water ratepayers are sewer ratepayers, who do we care? That's not right. They're not the same. The whole issue of lifeline rates continues to get kicked down. I'm not saying change rates based on income levels, I'm saying change rates based on consumption levels. Those are conservation-based rates. The less you use, the cheaper you pay. So I will never vote yes for going back to the airport, living off the general fund. I thought with the finance committee and the new commitments we made, it would be known. no more interfund borrowing. So I really hope that we hire a Public Works Director, I hope the city appropriates money to look at alternatives for disposing of our pee and poop that don't involve dumping it in the river and continuing to violate discharge standards. So weakening one fund to strengthen another, the idea you're doing ratepayers a favor, I totally reject that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Arth. Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-23, a resolution authorizing an interfund loan between the water fund and sewer fund.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion at hand? I do have one thing to say on my behalf. I do really appreciate the work that's been done by both the committee for the utilities or for the enterprise funds and the Finance Committee, and I understand the benefit of not lowering, sorry, not raising the sewer rates higher. I've just kind of increasingly been circling back to, you know, my deep appreciation for the water fund being strong and us needing to realistically pay a rate that sustains our services, as uncomfortable as that is. So I, I'm not 100% against this, it just doesn't sit well with me, with what we've been trying to do in Dunsmere. But I'm somewhat conflicted on this one. I understand why someone would want to move forward with this loan, I just would prefer maybe changing the rates so you pay less in water, more in sewer, to accurately reflect the needs, but that's my thoughts on it. I'd rather accurately reflect the needs of each fund so that when your regular citizen looks at their bill, they have an idea of what's needed to fund that particular thing, not understanding the complexity of this interfund. But it is not illegal, it is fully legal, and it's a useful tool. I would just rather not use it.
Well, on that point, we worry about Prop 218. Under Prop 218, if the water fund is generating too much water revenue, what are we supposed to do? We're supposed to reduce rates.
They're not generating too much. Excuse me, gentlemen, I think we're, I'm, let's call it a.
Call the question.
I'm not at all convinced it's legal. All right. Create a roll call though.
Councilmember Arth.
No.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Aye.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Aye.
Councilmember Kessler.
Aye.
Councilmember Deusch.
Aye.
Mayor Bryan.
No. Thank you. All right, motion carries three-two. And I'd just like to say, because this council is unanimous on so many items, this is good discussion. This could work out very well, the move we're making. We're doing the fundamental job of carefully watching our enterprises and our rates, and the Finance Committee, two years ago caught this error originally with our Finance Director, and we do need to get this fixed, the cash flow situation in the sewer fund is dire, and that's why we're moving under this time constraint. And I appreciate all the work involved with the recommendations and even the outcome. So, thank you, everyone. Let's move into old business, item C, Memorial Tree for Patty, update from our urban tree specialist.
Right, thank you. So we were able to meet with Alan Partey, who's a landscape architect. He works with a number of different cities, street trees, he's worked with the city of Ashland, Medford, El Taurus, Mount Chasta, has been doing landscape architecture for, for a couple of decades now in our area and southern Oregon. So he came out, took a look at the space, and actually met, I apologize, what's your name again? Jimmy, thank you, I apologize, it's been a long day. Jimmy and I, and so we went over a couple of different options. The really big concern is that the container that we have available right now isn't going to be big enough for the tree in the long term. So we could place the tree in the container, and we had that discussion, and again, you know, this is going to be an open discussion about that and different solutions for it. The container's too small, and so there is a concern that the tree either A, may not survive, or B, may cause significant damage to the container and lower concrete areas, similar to other trees that are in the Pine Street area. We also talked about, you know, future plans for the city. I know it's been mentioned at council or members of the public that we might change Pine Street into a parking lot, I mean, there's been a discussion about a ped mall. Honestly, the, the ped mall would be a really good option for a future tree to be there because we would be able to design a planter large enough to sustain that type of tree to move forward for decades as opposed to a couple of years. One of the solutions that we came up for an alternate is down on Sacramento Avenue between the flowering pear trees, taking the tree and then also purchasing additional trees to have more of kind of like a Christmas Boulevard for the holiday season. That stretch of vegetation has enough space to allow that tree to grow healthfully and the root system to spread out without causing any damage. City Manager Yu Haas did contact Union Pacific, who owns that property, and they have agreed that they'd be open to the idea and are actually willing to coordinate with us moving forward. So it's really coming just down to, you know, again, you know, what's going to work really well between the donation and then the City Council, and what direction you would like to go. But Alan's recommendation was if we do place it on Pine Street, it would be best to do it in-ground in a larger container that would have to be engineered and done properly to make sure that the health of the tree is sustained.
I think one important thing to add on this is the, the urban forester, Alan Partey, said if it was planted in the location right now, it wouldn't live beyond three years.
Yes, questions from council?
You said something about some kind of mall, make it another container?
So one of the things that we talked about, other cities have done, it's called a pedestrian mall. Basically, if you were to block traffic on Pine, and again, this is a bigger discussion than this proposal, but basically, if we were going to do this tree right, you would have to build a much larger, for every, I believe it's every one foot up, it's about three feet out, that you would need to plan for this tree. So we talked about, you know, if we moved in a direction of making a larger pedestrian area instead of a parking lot or a through road, it would, it could be facilitated that way. But if.
Fire chief has to have a lady to get there, and all the things that have ever been discussed.
Yeah, so again, that's, that's a bigger, that's a bigger discussion if we wanted to go that direction. The bigger, the bigger piece that Alan brought up was that the container as it sits right now is not sufficient for the tree. It's going to outgrow it, and it's, it's going to have a difficult time surviving. If we were to do it properly, again, like I said, for every one foot of the tree, you'd want three feet out. The other thing that he talked about is a maintenance schedule, we would have to also make sure if we did plant it there, and it shadows a certain portion of the sidewalk and street, it's going to intrinsically make it slippery because it's not going to get the sunlight, and so those, that's going to have to be something we take into account as well, which we can do. But again, to, to do it in a way that's going to maintain the tree for decades, we would need to have a larger space for it to be planted in.
I have a question. This, in this discussion, was the family and Mr. Limo agreeable to, you know?
I'm going to let him kind of speak to that if you.
The next question was, was any other species of trees recommended in terms of lasting 100 years?
We, we talked about different tree species, the tree's already been purchased, so we're kind of just dealing with that. Alan said if, if that's something we wanted to talk about, there are other local tree species, I mean, that's a bigger conversation. I mean, you can, you can have a number of different trees, be a Christmas tree, but we were just kind of dealing with the fact that Jimmy's already purchased that tree and understanding that aspect of it.
All right, if there's no more questions, I'd like to hear from you, Limo.
Before you start my plot, do you want to hear from Ella Peterson's granddaughter? Also, council, by the way, today is, would have been Patty's 82nd birthday, September 2nd's her birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Patty.
Oh.
So, I know you guys probably cried for granddaughter. Ella, do you want to speak? Is she there?
This is not a normal public comment, I'll open that later.
Hi, guys.
Okay.
I just want to thank everybody, and then also, I'm a little sick, so I apologize, I'm not there in person. But I'm, I'm just happy that you guys are all considering this, and I, I'm okay with, you know, what's best for the community, obviously, and making sure that it's thriving. The fact that you've gotten everybody out there to actually make sure that that will happen to where it's not just dying over, I really do appreciate that. So I'm all for, for a little Christmas walkway, that sounds amazing. And that's pretty much my say-so for right now, but thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you so much.
I'm sorry to break protocol.
Oh, no worries, I was doing it a little differently because you're so involved with this.
Well, and like I said, I don't want to speak on behalf of you or the family or anything like that.
My, my only, one of the regrets is that you won't have a growing Christmas tree for those tree lighting, and Dave's going to have to go out in the middle, dead snowstorm. Kind of another tree for you guys.
Tell you something about that, the last several years, Mount Chasta Ski Park has donated a tree, and we have very thick forests, and just to keep the healthy, or the forest healthy, we thin hundreds of trees a year.
Yes.
And we do it so that we can give away Christmas trees, and not every year, I know Big Dave's out in the past, but we deliver a too-big day, and he sets it all up.
Mr. Mayor?
Hell, yeah, I'll get them wherever I can. And Cut Above's been more gracious.
If it makes you feel better, it's not as if it's actually being cut down.
Okay. And then the other regret was that the kids won't have a tree growing up with them as they come back every year.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to recommend is, is that when we look at tribute to, not tribute to the trees, when we look at the candle lighting, it has been going from the fountain over to in front of the, you know, where it is now.
Yeah.
It could just as easily start down below with a special place, maybe even a, you know, if you want to have something there, and then have it work up Pine Street. So we could work the tree into a whole new ritual that can really work for everybody, is what I'm thinking.
I'm nervous about that, how steep that hill is in the wintertime and slippery and possible snow or ice, or even just wet, if it's wet, it could be dangerous. But now, I'm confused as to your exact proposed location, is it at the bottom of the street right here, there's like?
Yeah, there's like this vegetated strip between Sacramento Avenue.
There's like four small trees there, and a little plaque that says Sacramento Avenue. Okay, yeah, there's space in between those trees. The other one, logistics, how soon would you be able to purchase the other trees before the nursery closes? And how soon can we plan on at least sticking Patty's memorial tree in the planter with a small family and friends ceremony?
Well, we were basically just waiting for this item, and then we can easily move forward. Like I said, City Manager Yu Haas has already contacted Union Pacific, and we have approval from them to do it.
That's a great.
Yeah, so we've, we've got all that lined up, so it's really just coordinating with you guys.
The ducks are on the road, kids.
Yeah, hopefully we can get a couple of volunteers as well, and then we can organize everything.
Dave's good, Dave's good at getting volunteers.
Yeah.
I have a question. I mean, if that's all cool with you, you know, we're on a roll, but is that the right tree? Is there a tree that we could get, where we could have here, carry on our tradition?
It's not the last Fat Albert, Colorado Blue Spruce. This one is perfectly symmetrical.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well.
What if the Fat Albert isn't the right tree? What if there's a different tree that could be purchased? Find someplace to put it.
You mean, from up here across from the pizza place?
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I think we're a little bit ahead of ourselves. Before, yeah, before we even get a tree species, we would have to take a look at the engineering, and we'd have to look at funding for getting all that in place.
When that day comes, I'd be open to any kind of appropriate Christmas tree, and Patty's family would be too.
Yeah.
This one is used by a lot of people and places as a Christmas tree, it's stunning silver-blue, very symmetrical, and it'll look beautiful down there, flanked by a couple other trees for the holidays, and it'll bring people down to that street, which will help the businesses during the holiday season.
Yeah, it'll be beautifully decorated as well.
Yeah.
Have more than one tree.
And I like the idea of having a procession, maybe not come up the hill, maybe they could go around, it's not quite so steep.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Limo.
Thank you guys for your understanding, and happy birthday, Patty.
And thank you for being really amenable, too.
Okay, thanks.
All right, is there any further public comments? All right, I've seen none, let's open this up to discussion.
I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, that I think it's clear amongst all five of us, so that we all want to honor Patty, and I think that the flexibility we're seeing here will serve us all going forward, and I'm looking forward to having a tree we can celebrate around, and, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think in terms of the greater, bigger picture of, of having something in the downtown area on Pine Street, you know, I, I did talk to City Manager Yu Haas, and we do have the visioning coming up, we could maybe do something similar to that in terms of streetscaping. My big thing is, we've had people want to put parking and turn Pine Street into a parking lot completely, and then we've, I've had a couple of people talk about the pedestrian mall aspect of having like a little plaza there, and, and we can design ped malls to have fire, fire trucks to be able to go through.
That would be Dan Henry.
Yes, yeah, we can definitely do that if that's a bigger thing. I think, you know, we do need, in the grander scheme of everything, we do need at least like one community outreach to make sure that if that is the ped mall, we need people to be on board with that and not get upset about it not becoming parking and, and deal with that. So I think we'll have some opportunities coming up here soon during the, the visioning, going for that grant, as well as some possible downtown planning through that, that we can definitely get that rolling. I just, you know, in the conversations with Jimmy and Alan, you know, I, my preference would be a ped mall personally. I think they're great for downtowns, you could set them up easily for events, but that would give you a really good possibility for a lawned area with the tree in the center. But again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the community as a whole without hearing from everybody about that idea. So that's kind of why I was like, well, here's another solution, maybe we can do something down there for, you know, the next year or two, and then be able to, to do this really, really well. And Alan Partey offered really good advice as well in terms of memorials, is if we did move forward with a ped mall or something a little bit more permanent, having some plaques or some kind of hardscape with it as well, because again, you know, vegetation dies, as best as we can keep it alive. And so some, some type of hardscaping with it would make it, you know, stand the test of time for that. So I'm, I'm really happy we went through this process, I'm, I'm really happy that Jimmy and the family has been really wonderful to work with. And I would be, you know, if there's no other discussion, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve moving forward with the Blue Spruce location adjacent to Sacramento Avenue with proper UP approvals in place, and then I'll call the nursery and see how much the other trees are, and I'd be happy to purchase those.
With that being said, I would like to, for a second, your motion. My mission is to keep the tradition, so that just so that everyone knows what this councilman's vision is, is every Christmas, that Santa rolls from the fire truck down to the peace factory, peace factory, anyone that's been, yeah, so that's where I'm, regardless of where the tree's going, that's.
Yeah, we're not changing anything else.
We're not changing the tree.
On that note, I'll second your, your motion.
All right, motion and a second, any further discussion of the motion? Councilman Arth?
Well, thank you to Jimmy, happy birthday to Patty. I think it's the least bit ironic, as someone who keeps pushing for vision and planning, that it took the Patty Hill Memorial Tree for us to start talking about the Pine Street Plaza. Somehow, the City Planning Commission and the City Council accepted the renovation plans for 30 condominiums at the Travelers Hotel, and we were instructed, don't think about parking, because parking wasn't part of the hotel when it was built. But obviously, we're going to have significant parking problems. I wanted it to be a military memorial, I wanted Pine Street Plaza to be a military veterans memorial. And maybe my plan isn't as good as the Patty Tree or your plan for a ped mall or anything other, but the point is, we're still not interested in planning, visioning and planning for our future, and we need to do that. I'm very happy to support the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Jimmy and your family.
Yes.
Happy birthday, Patty.
You can do all those on the pedestrian mall.
I was going to say, we can do all of this.
The veterans and the Christmas tree. Let's start talking about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
All right, so we're moving on to old business, item D, this was moved from item C of the consent agenda, the appointment of two or three citizens to our solid waste. And. This was moved from item C of the consent agenda, the appointment of two or three citizens to our solid waste ad hoc committee.
For clarification, the original charge of the solid waste ad hoc committee had three public members. So we do have three spaces.
So before we move on with this, I got a private message from Tom, who said after seeing the proceedings this evening, it isn't his cup of tea and he signed off.
Okay, well, we'll still have an opening then.
Okay.
But we would have a quorum to meet.
We're back in the consent agenda, item C. We moved it to here.
Okay, what about the new business, D and C?
That'll be next.
Okay. So I'm moving first, okay, I see.
Yeah, so I believe we have the two remaining candidates here in the room. Would you guys like to come to the podium and introduce yourselves briefly?
Hello, my name is Alex Brendel. Can you hear me? I can't hear myself. Yes, it's spelled incorrectly in the minutes. It's replace the U with an E. B R E N D E L. So, yeah, I want to get on to the solid waste committee because I'm really interested in green waste. And I've got a lot of ideas and I recently moved to Eleanor Avenue, also known as the Dunsmere House. I'm loving it here. I'm loving it here.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up.
I'm Mike Delabana and I live here in Dunsmere, up on Olive Street. We must be fairly close. I just live over on the other side of here.
Olive Street?
Oh. So anyways, I'd like to be on the solid waste committee. I was on fortunate to work with Mark on the last solid waste, which was a pretty simple process. However, this solid waste time is going to be a little bit challenging. So I would like to serve on that. I'm also serve on DPAC and I oversee the green waste part of DPAC. So I welcome you to attend some of our meetings that we have once. Dunsmere Disaster Advisory Council, we meet once a month.
Oh, so fire disaster being the main disaster.
No, everything, everything. We've talked, we talked, we talked with COVID, we talked with the train, we talked about the freeway. We talked several things in disaster, but I would like to serve on the on the committee. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm happy to move the two remaining candidates.
We should do public comment first, right? Just for process.
Sure, yes. I'll open this up to public comment.
I'm not expecting any, but.
See, see none. I'll close public comment.
Happy to remove the two candidates. I think it couldn't get any better for Dunsmere, something new, seasoned veteran. But both of them have worked with the green waste streak. So for the three years the ad hoc solid waste committee has to deal with segregating our waste and making us fire safe and possibly coming up with marketable products, these guys are going to be big helps. So I'm very excited and grateful. Thank you.
And we have one more open position if anyone else is interested.
I'll second that motion. Bruce got it first. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Enthusiastically.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Welcome to the party.
Thanks for stepping forward again.
Thank you for stepping up.
Yeah. All right, this takes us into item 11, new business. We have already taken care of A, dispatched short order. So I'll see to B, approval of a lease with the Dunsmere Rod and Gun Club. Tom?
Yes, so Jerry Hurt, the president of the Dunsmere Rod and Gun Club is on the line. What I would like to say is that this has been a long process and very thoughtful process where Jerry was kind enough to open the books, you know, at the club. And they've got pretty slim margins and we talked about a bunch of different rates and looked at other rod and gun clubs. So there's been a lot of behind the scenes in this. Currently, we have a lease with the Rod and Gun Club where we're paying, where the Rod and Gun Club is paying $5 a year. This current contract would move us to $150 a month to be used to help pay off the airport enterprise funds debt to the general fund. And after 10 years, the lease would increase to $200 a month. And, you know, we, you know, when and did extensive research with John Kenny on a whole host of things. One is, you know, cleanup after the fact, given that this site has been used for a gun range for a very long time. It is standard practice at other gun ranges that you, you know, you clean up the excess cartridges, but there's only so much that you can expect, you know, a shoestring budget organization like this to fully clean this to clean the soil back to, you know, pristine standards if they were to leave. But I feel pretty happy about this agreement and it helps us get one small step closer to helping pay down that airport enterprise fund debt to the general fund. And I want to thank the Dunsmere Rod and Gun Club for, you know, hanging in and getting through this process.
All right, thank you, City Manager. Jerry Hurt?
Jerry, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyway. Dealing with the city manager Todd Juhas has been a very pleasant experience and, you know, the gun gun club and the members who we have members from all over the, all over the state that come here on vacation or visiting here. We have members from out of the state that come here. And I think that this does bring some income into the communities here locally. And we greatly appreciate the use of this property and have tried to take good care of it. And we've made considerable improvements to the property over the years that will eventually revert to the city. And anyway, thank you all very much.
I just want to clarify. Jerry, could you maybe give us a little bit of information in terms of where we could, you know, learn more about the Rod and Gun Club? Do you guys have like a website or how can I find out more if I want to know more about the organization?
We do have a website. And I would be very happy to meet with with you or with the mayor and the city council to answer any questions that you have and history of the gun club, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. It's not really super official. I'm just curious on how to join.
Yeah, I guess the basic question, if you're in here at Dunsmere and you want to go to the gun club, who do you call? How do you, how do you arrange going there?
How about if we go one better? Mr. Jerry, I'd like to invite you to come to a city council meeting.
Oh, don't make him come here. We'll go to him.
And give us, give us a rundown on the club so that everybody knows what you're about and how we can participate.
No, we're gonna go there and shoot guns.
We're gonna go there, yeah.
I can only bring my fishing pole.
Hey, guys, I'd just like to add that, you know, and really, I don't want to drag this on too long, but these guys have really worked hard to get a lot of grants, a lot of NRA money. And they have, they've got, you know, they've got a clubhouse. They've got, I mean, they've really done a lot to this site and take a lot of care and pride in it. It's really worth going up there.
All right, thank you so much, Councilman O.
Well, anytime that you would like to come and look at the gun range, we would be happy to meet you there and show you around. To become a member, if you go on our website, which is at dunsmerrodandgunclub.com, my phone number is on there. You can apply for a membership. Also, the Do It Best Hardware Store in the mall here in Mount Shasta, in their gun room, you can purchase a membership there. And we have a lot of people that do purchase their memberships there, especially people that are just visiting and need it right away. Instead of having to mail in an application and us mail it back, they can go there and purchase a membership and utilize the range as soon as they purchase that membership.
How much is it per year, just for the public's knowledge?
It's $30 a year.
Oh, that's a steal.
All right, thank you so much, Jerry. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I just.
Thank you.
Just a lawyer question, is the Rod and Gun Club a, an association, a corporation, a partnership, or none of the above?
We are a corporation and we are also a nonprofit.
Beautiful. And I really appreciate that the lease requires you to carry insurance. And you do carry insurance. My only other nitpick, having read the lease agreement, is the premises is defined by reference to rights of way held by the Pacific Telephone and Telegraph Company and they exist no more.
Okay, so.
I, you don't have to respond, Jerry. I think it's just more for maybe City Manager Yuhas.
And City Manager, yeah, if we just have a exhibit, an exhibit outlining the exact area. Although if you go up there, it's pretty clear which part's the gun range and which part is not.
I do.
All right. Open this item up for public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, either raise your hand in participants tab on Zoom or come up to the podium. All right, I've seen no public comment. I'll now close the public comments for this item and we can proceed to discussion.
Well, who wants to move it? I'm happy to move it with the notion, the very first meeting I ever went to of the Dunsmere City Council in 2008, this was on the agenda. Raising from $5 a year to $10 a year, the annual dues, and the roof came off the roof. No way. So congratulations to everybody involved.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could take a moment, I just want to make it clear, too, that this is a no way meant as any punitive measure against the gun club. It's all of us trying to survive in a tough world and working it out together. So I'm glad that we've been able to solve this problem after all this time.
Yes, thank you, Councilman O.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a lease agreement between the city and Dunsmere and the Rod and Gun Club.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion and a hand? I see none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Money roll call.
Well, it's an agreement.
Coming in, we're only receiving, we're not spending.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Jerry.
Onto new business. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt.
We're on to new business, item C.
Mr. Mayor, we should thank our staff and city manager for all the work they put into this.
Yeah.
Yes, for all the work put into this across the years. Thank you for crossing the finish line, Todd.
Todd, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from item 11C, which is the root canal for myself and Nathaniel. So I'll be out in the hall. Thank you.
We'll come get you.
Good word even went through. Continue painful or what?
All right, item 11C is the revocation of use permits for 4100 Pine Street. Rico, are you still here?
Yes. I'm here and I'm unmuted. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, let's get this root canal over quickly. So the project is a revocation of two use permits granted to 4100 Pine Street to address historic contamination of the site by chlorine, a banned legacy pesticide. The first use permit was issued in, or excuse me, was approved in 2019 for indoor commercial cannabis cultivation. And the second was approved in 2020 for non volatile commercial cannabis manufacturing. On July 14th, 2021, the planning commission held a public hearing on the matter, following which they adopted resolution PC 2021-06, revoking the two use permits to address a public health and safety concern subject to city council concurrence. Again, the action was not taken to address a public health, I'm sorry, the action was taken to address a public health and safety concern resulting from historic contamination of the site. Neither the property owner nor the cannabis business owner did anything improper to initiate revocation proceedings. In fact, both were consulted prior to initiating the revocation proceedings as there would be no purpose in rescinding the previously granted entitlements if the contamination issue could be safely addressed. An issue is that the property was treated for termites many years ago and the pesticide that was used has a long half life, which resulted in contamination of the cannabis produced on site. As a result, the cannabis failed state state safety testing. The cultivation operation was deconstructed, the business relocated to a new location, and a new non cannabis producing tenant has occupied 4100 Pine Street. Simply put, the revocation is a cleanup of entitlements to ensure that contamination does not occur again and pose a threat to public health and safety. If the city council agrees with the findings of the planning commission and the action taken by it relative to, relative to the two use permits, it is recommended that the city council adopt draft resolution 2021-21, which is included as attachment A to the staff report. A suggested motion to this effect is included on page three of your staff report. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm good.
All right, are there any questions?
No.
All right, it seems like a very good idea to me, but let's open this up to public comment, Rico. Open it up to public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please come to the podium or hit the raise your hand button. See none? I'll now close public comment.
I'm ready to make a motion, sir.
All right, if there's no further discussion?
I would like to emphasize, because when I first saw this, I, you know, immediately thought there was a problem and we're taking something away because they did something wrong. So I just want to take a moment to clarify that it's not the case. This is something that happened to them and it's unfortunate. But in our case, we're simply going through an administrative process to codify the move out of there. So I just wanted to make that clear, that's all.
Yeah, that is a very good point. What we're just doing is preventing anyone in the future from going down the same unfortunate path.
Get the root canal.
Yes.
I move that we adopt recommended findings and seek for exemption. And then we adopt resolution 2021-21, concurring the revocation of use permits for commercial cannabis use at 4100 Pine Street.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries. Four in favor, one refusal.
We can go get Pete.
Peter back in here? There you go.
Thank you all, good night.
Good night, Rico. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we, someone makes a motion to adjourn and we're at the point of talking about future agenda items. It has been brought to my attention and I have been asked by more than one numerous enough people on my street alone to ask council if we could revisit taking a look at.
New bumps?
Taking a look at the codes regarding our own trash. A lot of neighbors in my neighborhood seem to pick up, a lot of neighbors in my neighborhood who are just, they just don't care, they have, they're very disrespectful and they've got no gumption.
Do you like us to revisit our trash hoardings or hoarding of that nature?
Yes, something like that because if it's your trash and you put it out and the bear gets it, it's still your trash until it gets on the truck. You're responsible for that trash until the trash truck picks up your trash can.
Have you reported it to code enforcement?
Like I say, I'd like council to take a look at what we can do about the bear trash situation and give us negligence to inform people, the community, that what their responsibilities are. That's all I'm asking, so that people don't know.
Okay, I've got that one down. I think that we'll work with city manager to better form what exactly we're looking for as far as action goes. But at the very least, we should have our enforcement side look into that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And then I think I brought up during member comments, Wendy, you'll need a gen- And then I think I brought up during member comments, Wendy, you'll need agenda items by Monday, correct? To, or, sorry.
Friday.
Oh, no, Monday is Labor Day. Anyway, two Mondays from now, you would need it at the latest to get into the agen- next agenda, correct?
So I have to post the agenda on the Friday.
So next.
The Monday, sorry.
We typically solidify the agenda Thursday or Friday in the prior week.
Okay.
Yeah, I like to have.
Full packets out.
It is, yeah. And I prefer to have the materials ready by Friday.
So next Friday, you would need materials for our next meeting, correct?
I would just ask councils, if they're able to, it sounds like there's a lot of interest in setbacks, legal not performing. I don't think it's anything pressing, but.
I'm gonna, yeah, I know that we're covering that in our grants that we have now, so I'm gonna wait. And I know that we're also updating our housing element and possibly our land use elements. That'll be part of that discussion.
So we'll be coming our way.
Yeah.
Because it's been a while since we've reviewed that, what the rough timeframe is.
I know we need to approve a new housing element by the end of next year, which involves both the draft being done and approved and then moving through the sequor process. So we would probably have a draft element, if that's what we applied for. I have to double check with Rico, but I do know that we have a lot of stuff coming forward from our previous grants that we've applied for. But that'll probably be in anywhere from January to April of next year.
One thing I have is we need to start thinking about the town hall for the 218 process.
Absolutely.
So we need to come up with a date. I guess we do that in our next meeting. Would that be enough time?
I think so.
Well, I think the town hall date should have been in the advertisement, correct?
Well, I, I talked to Blake and my understanding was is that it wasn't. They didn't have it in time because we haven't made a decision on when the date was gonna be.
I don't think you necessarily need any of us to set a date. It's not necessarily a council meeting. It's an open town hall. So I, I would just say schedule it.
Okay, get it going.
Yeah.
Well, I always, direction to staff to schedule? Directing to schedule, but I'd also direct them to schedule with enough time to do maybe an alternative meeting if the first one doesn't have the sort of public attendance that we'd like. I think it's really important to give every opportunity, but.
I think that's a good.
I'd, I'd like to have the lifeline item on the next agenda if possible. Depending on what the agenda load is, I should be able to get everything to Wendy by next Friday in terms of a couple of options that we can look at to move forward with something like that. Yeah, by next Friday.
Okay.
If, if, if it, if we don't have too much on this next agenda, if whoever's on the pre-agenda committee, if there's too much, we can put it off, another one, since we are in the process.
Councilman Art was unable to make this one, so I think we're just looking to whether we're gonna.
You could do it over email.
Pick it up again or keep it our schedule.
Okay. Am I allowed to bring up an item for the agenda? We need to establish the rates for the short term rental registration. We have a lot of people starting to ask about that.
Okay.
And we're gonna start to enforce it January of 2022.
Sure, that's just a resolution and then the proposed.
Yeah, and I believe we need to wait the 45 days for the order to take effect.
No, you do not.
We do not? Okay, cool.
Well, it's a 30 days.
30 days.
Yeah. And I think we're pa- we're past 30 days.
That was last name.
Oh, oh, did we do that? Oh, well, we can start putting together the resolution and that can be approved at the meeting after the last 30 days. I mean, we could do it before if we're assuming that no one's gonna legally challenge it.
All right, and I, I do have one question for city manager. I know we're, we're not in any immediate hurry with the planning money for the economic development. But if we could, whenever we have a lighter agenda, maybe have another one of the companies you've been looking into, come and give us a presentation, kind of keep that in the, in our mind.
Yep, got that on my list.
With that said, and before I make a motion to adjourn, I would like to say, I would like to say God bless the fallen 13 and thank you to all those who have served.
Thank you, Councilman Texas. Councilman Art.
Well, I do want to follow up on your opening comments, Mr. Mayor. I do think we need at least a half day session on rail safety with the Union Pacific Railroad Company, the State Office of Emergency Services, County Office of Emergency Services and the sheriff. We need a partnership going forward. This is part of the vision and planning. So I hope it's not a beat up session. It's how do we work together to preserve the headwaters of the Upper Sacramento climate change. The other item is if it's not premature to get a report from either the city manager or our code enforcement officer on how the vacant and abandoned building enforcement program is going. Thank you.
That's quite a lot and we're gonna see what needs to happen with some of our grants as well. So we're gonna have a lot to work through this next agenda. If not everything's on it that we'd like, just know that it's not off the list.
And we'll move forward. Well, Dave, you're using that sucker, huh?
Yeah, but I wrote on it what the real.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is their second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council.
We're so adjourned.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Blake.
Thank you, everyone.
Enjoy Gold Beach.
Ah, no, I have not thought about it at all. I'm gonna, I'll email you.